Call to order. I want to thank everyone for being here this afternoon. We are now in the voting file, so... Nope. So, we are in bill number 141-31COR. If I could ask the clerk to please read the title.
Bill number 141-31COR is amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Aileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Judith T. Wanpat, EDD. An act to add a new item apparent 37 to subsection apparent K of section 26, 203 of chapter 26, Title XI Guam Code annotated, relative to providing business privilege tax exemptions for childcare centers and group childcare homes to promote early childhood learning and development opportunities for modern childcare facilities.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Yes.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas. Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Chris Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Obedience.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Vicente Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Obedience.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Bill number 141-31COR received 15 ye vote. Bill number 141-31 is duly passed by this body. Resolution number 171-31COR.
Resolution one, number 171-31COR, introduced by V.C. Pangalinen, T.R. Munya Barnes, Judith T. Wanpat, EDD, relative to petitioning the United States Congress to pass H.R. 1490 and S. 791, which will amend the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act of 1990 to include Guam and to improve and increase compensation for those affected by ionizing radiation.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Obedience.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Obedience.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Resolution number 171-31COR, 15 ye vote. Resolution 171-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 182-31LS.
Bill number 182-31LS is amended on the floor, introduced by Sam Mabini, Ph.D., M. Silva Tyron, Aileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., and others. An act to add a new section 8128 to chapter 80 of Title V Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing the Guam Public Library System to lease a portion of its frontage property at the Nevis M. Flores Public Library in Hagatnia for the operation of the food establishment.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Chris Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Obedience.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Bill number 182-31LS received 13 ye votes, two nays. Bill number 182-31LS is duly passed by this body. Bill number 191-31LS.
Bill number 191-31LS, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and further amended on the floor, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, T.R. Munya Barnes, M. Silva Tyron, and others. An act to add a new subsection G to section 26, 603 apparent B, apparent one of Article VI, Chapter 26 of Title XI Guam Code annotated, to amend sections 85, 110, and 85, 111, and add new sections 85, 111.1, and 85, 112.1, all of chapter 85, Title V Guam Code annotated, and to amend section 77, 124 of Article I, Chapter 77 of Title 21 Guam Code annotated, relative to the Off-Ireland Educational Training and Cultural Enhancement Fund, and the Sports Fund for Off-Ireland Travel, and to establish a mentoring and leadership program for the prevention and cessation of alcohol, tobacco, and drugs to be known as the Youth Educational Training Cultural Enhancement and Sports Opportunities Act.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Yes.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Obedience.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Obedience.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Amended bill number 191-31LS, received 15 ye votes. Amended bill number 191-31LS is duly passed by this body. Bill number 196-31.
Bill number 196-31COR, as substituted by the Committee on Public Works, Transportation, Utilities, and Veterans Affairs, and amended on the floor, introduced by M. Silva Tyron, T.R. Munya Barnes, Judith P. Guthard's DPA. An act to add a new section 54, 106, to Article I of chapter 54, Title V Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring the Department of Public Works, DPW, to consider the feasibility of road construction projects during the evening hours.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Yes.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Obedience.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Obedience. Obedience.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 196-31COR received 15 ye votes. Substitute bill number 196-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 203-31COR.
Bill number 203-31COR is amended on the floor, introduced by Aileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D. An act to amend section 61, 542 of chapter 61, Title 21 Guam Code annotated, relative to regulations of political science.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Yes.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Aye.
Senator Rory Respecho. Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Obedience.
Speaker Judith Wanpat. Senator Aileen Yamashita. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Speaker Wanpat. Senator Tina Barnes. Speaker Wanpat.
I was hoping for a big win for this one. Bill number 203-31COR received 11 ye votes, and four nay votes. Bill number 203-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number 204-31COR.
Bill number 204-31COR, introduced by M. Silva Tyron. An act to require the Department of Parks and Recreation to conduct a review of beaches and near-shore areas surrounding Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Yes.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Obedience.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho. Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Obedience.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Bill number 204-31COR received 15 ye votes. Bill number 204-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 206-31COR.
Bill number 206-31COR, introduced by V.C. Pangalinen. An act to add a new subsection apparent H to section 80, 105 of chapter 80, Division II of Title 21 Guam Code annotated, relative to the transfer of properties under the jurisdiction of Guam Community College to the jurisdiction of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission.
Roll call. Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Yes.
Senator Tony Attah.
No.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Yes.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Pass.
Senator Aileen Yamashita. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Speaker Judith Wanpat. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Bill number 206-31COR received nine yays, six nays. Bill number 206-31COR is duly passed by this body. Bill 192-31COR.
Bill number 192-31COR, as substituted by the Committee on Education and Public Libraries, and amended on the floor, introduced by Chris M. Duñez, T.C. Attah, Judith T. Wanpat, EDD, and others. An act to add a new section 34, 102, to chapter 34 of Title 17 Guam Code annotated, relative to establishing a scholarship program for economically disadvantaged students, and providing funding sources for the program, and to cite this act as the Growing Guam's Workforce Scholarship Program.
Senator Tom Attah.
Yes.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Judith Guthard. Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Obedience.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Obedience.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Obedience.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 192-31COR received 15 ye votes. Substitute bill number 192-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 198-31COR.
Bill number 198-31COR, as substituted by the Committee on Education and Public Libraries, and amended on the floor, introduced by Chris M. Duñez, Aileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., T.C. Attah. An act to add a new Article 14 to chapter 15 of division III, Title 17 Guam Code annotated, relative to establishing a scholarship program for economically disadvantaged students, and providing funding sources for the program, and to cite this act as the Every Child Is Entitled to a Higher Education Scholarship Program.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Yes.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Obedience.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Obedience.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 198-31COR received 15 ye votes. Substitute bill number 198-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 210-31COR.
Bill number 210-31COR, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and amended on the floor, introduced by Judith T. Wanpat, EDD, V.C. Pangalinen. An act to add a new chapter 71 and a new section 161, 102, chapter 161, all of Title XI Guam Code annotated, relative to providing the Department of Revenue and Taxation with the necessary resources and tools to target high-risk cash-based businesses and nonlicensed businesses engaged in military construction projects, and to be known as the Cash Economy Enforcement Act of 2011.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Yes.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Obedience.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Obedience.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 210-31COR received 15 ye votes. Substitute bill number 210-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 212-31COR.
Bill number 212-31COR, as amended by the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting, introduced by V. Anthony Attah. An act to add a new article VII to chapter IV of Title IV Guam Code annotated, relative to sexual harassment complaints.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Obedience.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Obedience.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Yes.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 212-31COR received 15 ye votes. Substitute bill number 212-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 226-31LS.
Bill number 226-31LS, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and amended on the floor, introduced by Judith P. Guthard's DPA, Sam Mabini, Ph.D., B.J.F. Cruz, and others. An act to add new subsections apparent C, D, E, F, G, and H to section 5205, and to amend section 5207 apparent C, and add new subsections apparent B, E, and F, all of Article II, chapter 50 of division II, title 12 Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring a country of origin label to comply with the Guam Product Sale Permit Program.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Yes.
Senator Tony Attah.
No.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
No.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Obedience.
Senator Aileen Yamashita. Senator Frank Blas. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Mona Silva Tyron. Senator Frank Blas. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Substitute bill number 226-31LS received 11 ye votes, four nays. Substitute bill number 226-31LS is duly passed by this body. Bill number 227-31LS.
Bill number 227-31LS, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and amended on the floor, introduced by Judith P. Guthard's DPA, Sam Mabini, Ph.D., B.J.F. Cruz, and others. An act to add a new article II of chapter II, title V Guam Code annotated, relative to establishing a task force on the Guam product sale under the auspices of the Office of Isigundu Nalmagallahin Guahan, the Lieutenant Governor of Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Obedience.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Obedience.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 227-31LS received 15 ye votes. Substitute bill number 227-31LS is duly passed by this body. Resolution number 211-31COR.
Resolution number 211-31COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, Judith T. Wanpat, EDD, relative to requesting for the Obama Administration to support and for the United States Senate to ratify the World Health Organization Framework Convention on Tobacco Control and Its Efforts to Address and Counteract the Global Epidemic Derived from Tobacco Use.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Attah.
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Obedience.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Mona Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Obedience.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Resolution number 211-31COR received 15 ye votes. Resolution number 211-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 236-31COR.
Bill number 236-31COR as substituted and amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith T. One-Patt EDD, T.R. Munya Barnes, V.C. Pangolinan. An act to add a new Chapter 51 to Division V of Title XV Guam Code annotated relative to establishing the Physician Recruitment and Retention Education Debt Repayment Program.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah. Senator Tony Attah. Senator Frank Blas. Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Chris Duñez. Senator Judith Guthard. Senator Sam Mabini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios. Senator Ben Pangolinan. Senator Rory Rispicio. Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Manas Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith One-Patt. Senator Aileen Yamashita. Senator Frank Blas. Senator Sam Mabini. Senator Frank Blas.
Substitute bill number 236-31COR received 12 ye votes and three nays. Substitute bill number 236-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 238-31COR.
Bill number 238-31COR as substituted by the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting and amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Attah, Adolfo B. Palacios Sr., Judith P. Guthard's DPA. An act to amend Section 4502D and to add new sections 4504.1 and 4508 to Chapter IV of Title IV Guam Code annotated relative to expanding whistleblower protection to all employees of the Government of Guam.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah. Senator Tony Attah. Senator Frank Blas. Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Chris Duñez. Senator Judith Guthard. Senator Sam Mabini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios. Senator Ben Pangolinan. Senator Rory Rispicio. Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Manas Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith One-Patt. Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 238-31COR received 15 ye votes. Substitute bill number 238-31 is duly passed by this body. Resolution number 254-31COR.
Resolution number 254-31COR as substituted by the author. Introduced by T. Ciata, R.J. Rispicio, Adolfo B. Palacios Sr., and others. Relative to the affirmation of a balanced modernization as it relates to Phase Ia of the Port Modernization Program and resulting sustainability and economic vitality of the commercial port of Guam.
Senator Tom Attah. Senator Tony Attah. Senator Frank Blas. Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Chris Duñez. Senator Judith Guthard. Senator Sam Mabini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios. Senator Ben Pangolinan. Senator Rory Rispicio. Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Manas Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith One-Patt. Senator Aileen Yamashita. Speaker One-Patt. Speaker Judith One-Patt.
Substitute resolution 254-31COR received 13 ye votes and two nays. Resolution number 254-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 336-31COR.
Bill number 336-31COR as substituted by the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting and amended on the floor. Introduced by T. Ciata, R.J. Rispicio, Adolfo B. Palacios Sr., and others. An act to further amend Section IV of Public Law 30-57 relative to authorizing the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port to enter into negotiations for the acquisition of the Pola Gantry Cranes owned by Matson Horizon Inc. or its successor.
Senator Tom Attah. Senator Tony Attah. Senator Frank Blas. Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Chris Duñez. Senator Judith Guthard. Senator Sam Mabini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios. Senator Ben Pangolinan. Senator Rory Rispicio. Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Manas Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith One-Patt. Senator Aileen Yamashita. Senator Sam Mabini.
Substitute bill number 336-31 received 12 ye votes and three nays. Substitute bill number 336-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 273-31COR.
Bill number 273-31COR as substituted by the Committee on Utilities, Transportation, Public Works, and Veterans Affairs. Introduced by Chris M. Duñez, V.C. Pangolinan. An act to delete a portion of the 1966 Highway Master Plan Reservation Eastman on Lot Number 121-6, Mong Mong Totu Maiti, Guam, and to repeal and reenact Section 62103 of Article I, Chapter 62 of Title 21, Guam Code annotated relative to compliance with master plan.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah. Senator Tony Attah. Senator Frank Blas. Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Chris Duñez. Senator Judith Guthard. Senator Sam Mabini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios. Senator Ben Pangolinan. Senator Rory Rispicio. Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Manas Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith One-Patt. Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Substitute bill 273-31 received 15 ye votes. Substitute bill number 273-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 285-31COR.
Bill number 285-31COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T. Ciata. An act to add a new Section 22420.1 to Article IV, Chapter 22 of Title V Guam Code annotated, and a new Section 23109 to Chapter 23, Part I of Division II Title X Guam Code annotated, relative to mandating that healthy foods be sold in vending machines at all government of Guam buildings.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah. Senator Tony Attah. Senator Frank Blas. Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Chris Duñez. Senator Judith Guthard. Senator Sam Mabini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios. Senator Ben Pangolinan. Senator Rory Rispicio. Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Manas Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith One-Patt.
Big fat, yes.
Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Bill number 285-31 received 12 ye votes and three nays. Bill number 285-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 286-31COR.
Bill number 286-31COR as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Adolfo B. Palacios Sr. An act to amend Sections 3109 and 3118 and to add new Sections 3121, 3121.1, and 3121.2, all of Chapter 30 of Division III Title V Guam Code annotated, relative to granting increased economy to the Office of the Attorney General on Financial and Personnel Matters.
Senator Tom Attah. Senator Tony Attah. Senator Frank Blas. Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Chris Duñez. Senator Judith Guthard. Senator Sam Mabini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios. Senator Ben Pangolinan. Senator Rory Rispicio. Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Manas Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith One-Patt. Senator Aileen Yamashita. Senator Frank Blas.
Amended bill 286-31 received 15 ye votes. Amended bill number 286-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 282-31COR.
Bill number 282-31COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by T.R. Munya Barnes, Judith T. One-Patt EDD, F.F. Blas Jr. An act to amend Section 51502 of Article V, Chapter 51 of Division II Title X Guam Code annotated, relative to exempting the Guam Recycling Revolving Plan from the Transfer Authority of Imagallán, Guahan.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah. Senator Tony Attah. Senator Frank Blas. Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Chris Duñez. Senator Judith Guthard. Senator Sam Mabini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios. Senator Ben Pangolinan. Senator Rory Rispicio. Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Manas Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith One-Patt. Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Bill number 282-31 received 15 ye votes. Bill number 282-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 294-31LS.
Bill number 294-31LS as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Adolfo B. Palacios Sr. An act to amend Section 66103 of Chapter 66 Title X Guam Code annotated relative to the Civilian Volunteer Police Reserve to add a new subsection C to Section 5111 of Chapter 50 Title V Guam Code annotated relative to re-establishing the Accessible Parking Plan and to amend Section 3401.1E of Article IV, Chapter 3, Title 16 Guam Code annotated relative to accessible parking for persons with disabilities.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah. Senator Tony Attah. Senator Frank Blas. Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Chris Duñez. Senator Judith Guthard. Senator Sam Mabini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios. Senator Ben Pangolinan. Senator Rory Rispicio. Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Manas Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith One-Patt. Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Amended bill 294-31 received 15 ye votes. Amended bill number 294-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 325-31COR.
Bill number 325-31COR as substituted by the Committee on Utilities, Transportation, Public Works, and Veterans Affairs. Introduced by T. Ciata, R.J. Rispicio, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., and others. An act to add a new Section 3329.1 to Article III of Chapter III of Title 16 Guam Code annotated relative to providing for the safety of pedestrians who are blind or visually impaired when crossing Guam roadway.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah. Senator Tony Attah. Senator Frank Blas. Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Chris Duñez. Senator Judith Guthard. Senator Sam Mabini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios. Senator Ben Pangolinan. Senator Rory Rispicio. Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Manas Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith One-Patt. Senator Aileen Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 325-31 received 15 ye votes. Substitute bill number 325-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 330-31COR.
Bill number 330-31COR introduced by R.J. Rispicio, T. Ciata, B.J.F. Cruz, and others. An act to require that budgetary savings or cost avoidances realized within any general fund budget appropriation for any executive. fund budget appropriation for any executive branch agency due to Imagalahin's reorganization of the government be used for the purpose of reducing the government of Guam's general fund deficit.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Judith Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Sam Abini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Rispecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Manas Silva Tyron.
Aye.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Aye.
Senator Ilina Mashida.
Bill number 330-31 received 15 ye votes. Bill number 330-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 279-31-COR.
Bill number 279-31-COR, introduced by TC Ada, R.J. Rispecho, Adolfo B. Palacios Sr. An act to amend Sections 26403, 26404, 26203-K, 21, and 26504, and to add new Sections 26403.1 and 26403.2, all of Chapter 26, Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, to amend Article 2 of Chapter 45 and Section 67105.1 of Chapter 67, to add a new chapter, new section 77135 to Chapter 77, and a new section 72109 to Chapter 72, all of Title X Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new section 40105.1 to Chapter 40, Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to eliminating the tax exemption on liquid fuel tranship through Guam, and to appropriate revenues to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, the Mayor's Council of Guam, the Office of Veterans Affairs, and the Guam Police Department, the Guam Police Department and the Guam Fire Department.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada.
No.
Senator Frank Blas.
No.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
No.
Senator Judith Guthardts.
No.
Senator Sam Abini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Aye.
Senator Rory Rispecho.
Aye.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Manas Silva Tyron.
No.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
No.
Senator Ilina Mashida. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Bill number 279-31-COR received 3 ye votes, 12 nay. Bill number 279-31 failed to pass. Bill number 281-31-COR.
Bill number 281-31-COR as amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munya Barnes. An act to add a new subsection D to Section 9303 of Article 3, Chapter 9 of Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to transmitting to the compiler of laws notification of the disposition of rules and regulations filed with the Legislative Secretary.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada. Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Judith Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Sam Abini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Rispecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Manas Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat. Senator Ilina Mashida.
Amended Bill 281-31 received 15 ye votes. Amended Bill number 281-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 2329-31.
Bill number 329-31-COR as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and further amended on the floor, introduced by R.J. Rispecho, TC Ada. An act to amend Sections 71501 of Article 5, Chapter 71 of Title X Guam Code Annotated, relative to insurance requirements for private security organizations.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Judith Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Sam Abini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
That's because I asked that I be excused from voting. I have an interest in the family business.
Should.
Thank you.
Should the Senator be excused? What's the pleasure of the body? No objection?
Thank you.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Aye.
Senator Rory Rispecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Manas Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Aye.
Senator Ilina Mashida.
Amended Bill number 329-31 received 14 ye votes and 1 excused from voting. Amended Bill number 329-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 344-31-COR.
Bill number 344-31-COR as amended on the floor, introduced by V.C. Pangalinen. An act to amend Sections 24102A, 24102F, and 24103 of Article 1 and Section 2441 of Article 4, all of Chapter 24 of Division 2, Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Section 75112I of Chapter 75, Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, relative to Tomorrowland Trust properties.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada.
No.
Senator Frank Blas.
No.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
No.
Senator Judith Guthardts.
No.
Senator Sam Abini.
No.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios. Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Rispecho.
No.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator Manas Silva Tyron.
No.
Speaker Judith Wanpat. Senator Ilina Mashida. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Amended Bill 344-31 received 3 ye votes, 12 nays. Amended Bill number 344 failed to get the required votes to be passed. Bill number 241-31.
Bill number 241-31-COR as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, introduced by V.C. Pangalinen. An act to exempt the maps of the Tomorrowland Trust leased sites previously approved by the Tomorrowland Trust Commission from the requirements of Article 2 of Chapter 62, Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, relative to subdivision and recordation procedures.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
No.
Senator Tony Ada.
No.
Senator Frank Blas.
No.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Judith Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Sam Abini.
No.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Rispecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Manas Silva Tyron. Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Aye.
Senator Ilina Mashida.
Amended Bill 241-31 received 8 ye votes, 7 nays. Amended Bill number 241-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 297-31 LS.
Bill number 297-31 LS introduced by V.C. Pangalinen. An act to rezone lot number 3257-4-R2 in the municipality of Sinahania from agricultural zone parent aid to commercial zone C.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Judith Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Sam Abini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Rispecho.
Aye.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Manas Silva Tyron.
Aye.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Aye.
Senator Ilina Mashida.
Bill number 297-31 received 15 ye votes. Bill number 297-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 235-31-COR.
Bill number 235-31-COR as amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munya Barnes, B.J.F. Cruz, Judith T. Wanpat EDD. An act to authorize Imagalahin, Guam, to transfer abandoned staff housing properties held by the government of Guam to the Autoridad Gimina de Renueva en Suerte de Guam Housing and Urban Renew Authority for the purpose of affordable housing.
Roll call. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Judith Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Sam Abini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Aye.
Senator Ben Pangalinen. Senator Rory Rispecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Manas Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Aye.
Senator Ilina Mashida. Senator Tom Ada.
Bill number 235-31 received 14 ye votes and 1 nay vote. Bill number 235-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 339-31.
Bill number 339-31-COR as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Economic Development, Senior Citizens, and Election Reform, and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., M. Silva Tyron, Adolfo B. Palacios Sr., and others. An act to amend Chapter 84 of Division 4, Title X Guam Code Annotated, relative to the establishment, promotion, and maintenance of a comprehensive Guam emergency medical and ambulance services system.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Judith Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Sam Abini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Rispecho.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Manas Silva Tyron.
Aye.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Aye.
Senator Ilina Mashida.
Substitute Bill number 339-31 received 15 ye votes. Substitute Bill number 339-31-COR is duly passed by this body. On the voting file, we still have members to confirm.
And let me see, where's the... Yes, vetoed, notwithstanding the objections of Imagalahin, Imagalahin, vetoed Bill number
Ask the clerk to please read the title.
Vita Bill 80-31-COR is amended on the floor, introduced by V.C. Pangalinen, Judith T. Wanpat EDD, TC Ada, and others. An act to add a new Section 58148 to Chapter 58 of Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the Qualifying Certificate Review Board.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
No.
Senator Tony Ada.
No.
Senator Frank Blas.
No.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. Senator Judith Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Sam... Senator Sam Abini. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
No.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
No.
Senator Manas Silva Tyron.
No.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Oui.
Senator Ilina Mashira.
No.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Notwithstanding the objections of the Governor, and the override of vetoed Bill eighty dash thirty-one, it received seven ye votes and eight nays. Vetoed Bill eighty dash thirty-one failed to get the required vote to be passed. On the appointment of Ms. Conchita D. Bethan to serve as a member of the Guam Land News Commission, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Conchita Bethan receiving unanimous support, she is duly confirmed. On the appointment of Mr. John Ilau to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. John Ilau receive unanimous support, he is duly appointed. On the appointment of Mr. John Ray Titano II to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Eileen, are you voting? No. Okay, so, Dr. John Ray Titano receive fourteen, John?
I mean, Mr., I'm sorry.
My neighbor, Dr. John Ray. Mr. John Ray Titano II received fourteen votes, he is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. John A. Ruiz to serve as Director of BBMR, roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blass.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Oui.
Senator Judith Guthard.
Yes.
Senator Sam Abini.
Yes.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Ben Pangalinen.
Yes.
Senator Rory Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Manas Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Judith Wanpat.
Oui.
Senator Ilina Mashira.
On the appointment of Mr. John Ruiz to serve as the Director of BBMR, he received fifteen ye votes. Mr. John Ruiz is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mrs. Lisa Bossa Cruz to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification, all in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Lisa Bossa Cruz is duly confirmed by this body, unanimous support. On the appointment of Ms. Margie Ann Ortera to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Margie Ann Ortera receive unanimous support, she is duly confirmed. On the appointment of Ms. Roberta Abide to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Roberta Abide unanimously confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Dr. Lawrence Casperbauer to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification, all in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Casperbauer receive unanimous support, he is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Dr. Gregory Miller to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, all in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Gregory Miller receive unanimous support, he is duly confirmed. On the appointment of Ms. Linda Perez to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, please raise your hand. Ms. Linda Perez receive unanimous support, so she is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Jason Cruz to serve as a member of the Guam Regional Transit Authority Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Jason Cruz receive unanimous support, he is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Andrew Taidink to serve as a member of the Guam Regional Transit Authority Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Andrew Taidink receive unanimous support, he is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. William G. Miller Jr. to serve as a member of Guam Building Code Council, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. William Miller Jr. is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Brent Y. C. to serve as a member of the Guam Building Code Council, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Brent Y. C. receive unanimous support, he is duly confirmed by this body. We've exhausted the list on the voting file, recognize the majority leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn subject to your call.
On that motion, without any objection, the legislature is adjourned.